Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miller.
Here.
Eckert.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckert.
Yes.
Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 16, 2015, and approval of claims in the amount of $236,941.87 and payroll expenses of $93,973.06. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Someone?
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Fisher, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckert.
Yes.
Item number six, reports from boards and officers. Personnel committee meeting from November 16, 2015. Councilman Miller.
We had discussion on the finalization of the city council handbook before council and boards, or talked about the development of the board handbook as well, and we started working on that. We also talked about implementation of the policy which would allow any of our first responders to work, to help work on the ambulance for transfers when they are off duty. We thought that would be a good way to help facilitate those transfers. That was the three items that we had discussed at that personnel meeting.
Anybody have any questions for Councilman Miller? Wes, would you please go ahead and give the finance committee report?
At committee meeting just a few minutes ago, we reviewed our cash investments, purchase orders, and claims, discussed again the incentive for new construction and development for the site behind Walmart, and we're looking at engineering estimates on water and sewer lines that would have to be run for that. We've gotten updates on the transfer station and discussed a transfer fund from the general fund to cemetery fund, and then we had some discussion on an item on the arena that we'll discuss here later.
Counsel have any questions for Councilman Miller?
Councilman Miller, in the finance committee, was there any discussion regarding continuing sales tax decline in the range which is fine out and affect our budget?
We did. We had a brief discussion on that. At any time, we can look at any of our budgeted projects that we haven't done yet and make the decision about whether or not we do those or postpone them. We're looking at it on a month-to-month basis, and so at this time, we're not making any drastic decisions to stop anything, but we are looking at if we're going to put off the start of certain projects. We are already looking at that and trying to, you know, trying to set ourselves up so that, you know, if something is not changing in two months, we may push that off for a year, or if it doesn't happen, if the sales tax is still declining in three months, there may be another project that has to be pushed off. So we are having those discussions every other week. Thank you.
Counsel have any further questions for Mr. Miller? All right. Councilman Fisher, would you give the Alva Recreation Complex committee meeting report?
Yes. We had a presentation from Allen and Bennett, talking about the possibility of a land swap. There was no action taken on that. I think it's in the beginning stages, so mainly discussion. And other than that, there was a discussion about the possibility of adding some extra duties as far as the mini park, adding some other parks to that board. That was discussion. Other than that, it was just about...
Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Fisher? Okay. Mr. Dunham, you have tourism board meeting report.
I am, I do not have minutes. I'm not certain that that board even met last month. There were no action items on that board's agenda other than just minutes and claims. So there wasn't any actions for them to take other than those approvals, and I'm not, and I have not, like I say, I have not seen the minutes from that meeting yet.
Mr. Ritter said they did not meet.
Did not meet.
There was nothing, there was no application, so there was no meeting.
Yeah.
For the mayor's report, probably the, coming out of the last meeting, the council asked that I bring back recommendation for a committee to review business ordinance. I have commitments from four individuals. I'm close to having a commitment, I feel like I'm close to having a commitment from the fifth, and hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have that fifth individual identified and able to bring that for council consideration. I would entertain any questions from the council. All right. Mr. Dunham, the business manager's report.
Well, first thing I'd report on is the recreation park master plan. On the 20th of November, we were, we met with ARC master plan committee members and Anthony Blatt of Hornbeck and Blatt Architects to discuss the design of the Alva Recreation Center and development of a master plan. They, the committee was provided a discussion, plan, something to simulate discussion prior to that meeting, and we kind of made some adjustments to that. We, Mr. Hornbeck, or Mr. Blatt took some information back. We're trying to develop a plan that would guide the growth of that complex for the next 20 years. The board decided that there were some other items that we needed to add, and there were some things they wanted to take off, and they also instructed staff to meet with Mr. Blatt to review the layouts as discussed. And once we, the staff was happy with the plan, to bring it back to the committee, and then the full ARC board for discussion and possible adoption. We are still in those drawing phases to get that laid out. Do expect to have some sort of, at least a small presentation for the ARC meeting, I believe it is, next week. Also, in the same vein as the discussions with, about the ARC master plan, I wanted to talk to Mr. Blatt about the development of a master plan for all of Alva's parks and trails, and we do have a drawing, some information to go over with the park and building committee tonight after the council meeting. And this, what this would do is help us develop a plan that would allow us to systematically address all of our park and recreation needs, and hopefully eliminate any duplication that's not needed, and then allow for, and it also allow for the enhancement of Alva's quality of life. But that will be discussed probably by the, will be discussed at the parks and building committee after this. The city council handbook, I sent everybody, all the council members, an email recently asking for times. The ones that responded said that it would be best if we had this training session during a regularly scheduled meeting, so I'm going to be working with O-MAG to get that meeting on a date when it appears that there will be a lot agenda and have that trained. Some proposed, one of the proposed ordinances that we've been talking about that is almost ready for presentation to the council is ordinance to address texting and driving. On November 1, House Bill 1964, which is referred to as the Trooper Nicholas Dees and Trooper Keith Birch Act of 2015, went into effect for the state of Oklahoma. This bill and this new law makes it illegal to operate a motor vehicle while texting or reading electronic messages, and provides for a penalty of $100 if convicted of that fine, of that offense. Our ordinance, the way we've got it drawn up right now, would mimic this law. The reason for this, one of the reasons for this ordinance is to allow that offense to be addressed in municipal court other than district court. The way it stands right now, if our officers do have the ability to stop and ticket people for texting and driving, but that would be, that would have to be prosecuted in district court, this would just give them the opportunity to issue that ticket on a municipal fine instead of a district court fine. We do, we have been talking about as far as infrastructure programs, projects we've got going on. We've been talking for about 12 months with staff and committee members to address water and sewer extensions out east of Alva for some businesses and some housing. The city's developed a plan to construct the infrastructure which meets the needs of the developer and enhances the services for both existing, for the developer and the existing businesses in the area. It also allows for growth to the, to the north for business development. Right now, the city's looking, if we were to do this, the city would be looking at contracting out for the sanitary sewer construction, and those costs are estimated right now at $183,000, $184,000. The water line infrastructure construction, we would handle in-house. Construction cost on those right now are estimated at $121,000. Your estimated water construction costs do include labor to complete the construction. There would be some incidental charges such as permitting from DEQ, construction oversight and contingencies for both these projects. This would be something that would have to be brought back to the council to vote on because they are not, but they are not part of the 2015, 2016 budget. They were not considered as part of the budget, expense estimates because of the uncertainty of what the expenses, the expenses would be. And right now, we will be addressing tonight the Young Street project. We've been talking about how to get some other infrastructure issues taken care of. One thing I would like to point out that last week, we had, well, the ice storm that came in here, I believe, was Thursday or Friday of last week, knocked out the power to the water wellfields. We did have the infrastructure in place that was able to go down there and operate the wellfields until last Thursday. Last Thursday morning, we had full power restored back to the wellfield. There might have been some minor fluctuations in water pressure throughout the day, but we were supplying water to the community the entire time, and there was never a concern of losing that while we were operational. I think a lot of things needs to go out to our water and sewer department for keeping that operational. Our meter project is running forward. We are trying to pick up some of the meters that were missed over the past few weeks, back in the books that have already been done, but we're approximately halfway finished with that, with that meter installation. There have been some billing issues that have come up during that process that we are addressing as we, as they happen, and trying to make them, make everything operational in the way it should be. And at this time, that'd be my comments, my report. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item number seven is discussion and action on Resolution 2015-111, approving inter-local cooperative agreement for Circuit Engineering District, CED number eight.
This is an annual resolution we do that helps us control some of our costs when purchasing signs, but we make a, we pass this resolution annually with Circuit Engineering District number eight to purchase traffic control and other signage that we may utilize throughout the city. It does make it more cost-effective to buy that, buy those signage versus contracting out. For signage that we purchased last, last year, we saved about $500 by going here to Circuit, to CED number eight, which is a benefit to the city of Alva. I would recommend that at this time, we still, we continue our relationship with them and pass the resolution.
Is there a motion on this agenda item?
I have moved adoption of Resolution number 2015-111, approving an interlocal cooperative agreement for Circuit Engineering District. Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Valencia, a second, for Dr. Hannaford, to approve Resolution number 2015-111, approving interlocal cooperative agreement for Circuit Engineering District number eight. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Valencia.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckert.
Yes.
Item number eight, discuss and vote to approve Resolution 2015-112, authorizing application for financial assistance from the REAP funds in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of purchasing Polycarts.
This again is a requirement of the REAP grant that council approved, a resolution authorizing us to apply for those funds. We do, we, this is a resolution we pass annually. We are seeking to apply for $50,000 for the purpose of purchasing Polycarts for the city of Alva. Currently, we're looking at a Polycart program for the city of Alva, and that would eliminate individual trash containers at residences. This would require about a $10,000 match. It would purchase about, based on our current pricing, it would purchase between 923 and 1,091 Polycarts, which is about a third of what we'd need to go through the entire community. By purchasing Polycarts, it would eliminate issues that we could have such as workers' comp. We've been, we've been very fortunate not to have any back injuries or any kind of workers' comp injuries, but this would eliminate that because we wouldn't have to be picking up the, the individual bags and lifting them out of containers and lifting containers. Everything would be put into the Polycart, our trucks that we have, have on hand now, and would be buying in the future, are equipped to back, with back dump devices that would dump Polycarts, so there'd be no additional equipment needed on that, on that side of it. It would also eliminate the possible exposure of our employees getting stuck with needles or cuts or things like that that could be serious issues should they happen. But this is part of the grant process. That is the program we're looking at implementing, and we would need to, for us to move forward with this application, we would need to approve the resolution. So at this time, I would recommend that we would approve Resolution 2015-12 to apply for REAP funding.
Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Dunham?
Yes, Joe Don. How would that affect personnel? Will we be letting people off, or will we still need the same amount of people?
Right now, because it is a back dump program, we would still need the personnel on the back of the, back of the truck, you know, two people to work both sides of the alley, bringing those over, putting them onto the truck, dumping them. So I see no, no immediate reduction in personnel because of this.
At what size of carts would we be going with, and how will that affect how that builds up to the customer?
Would not affect how it would be billed out to the customer at this time. There's no, we're not considering anything on that end of it. We're looking at either 65,000, 65 gallon or 95 gallon containers. They are a heavy Polycart container. They're less apt to blow around. They have a permanently attached lid to them. It would eliminate, you know, animals, varmints from possibly getting into the, getting into it. And again, of course, we would not be handling the trash directly like we do now as far as lifting them out of containers, and each, each household would be, at the end of the program, if we, whether we phased it in one, a third at a time, or whether we bought a third of them and then budgeted for the other two thirds through city funds, every address would end up having one. It would make, ensuring that we are collecting trash from correct addresses easier. A lot of times, as I drive around and look at what's going on, we may have households just putting, we've got some front pickup houses, and there may, some households may just putting, putting bags of trash out there on the curb for us to pick up. You know, that certainly allows for varmints and stray dogs and cats to get into that and stray it everywhere that we ultimately have to come back and pick up. It would eliminate those processes because it should be in the container. The containers are relatively easy, easily wheeled from the house to the curb, so they wouldn't have to sit on the curb. It could be brought up to the house and wheeled out on the day of pickup. The evening, I'd recommend the evening before so that to ensure that it was out. But it would allow for that, that process to happen better. Now, we, and it does eliminate the problem we do have now, is that we do have a clause in our ordinance that allows for trash exemption. That is, you know, we do grant some, and, you know, there are people that, there are addresses that are exempt, but if that address should change purpose and should start putting trash out, currently, our guys do not know, I mean, out on the field, you don't know whether that house should be exempt or not, and it would eliminate that because we would be picking, these, these containers would be marked "City of Alva," would be serial numbered, would be assigned to every address, so that if the container's out, we know we're supposed to pick it up.
So will this REAP grant, would it be available in the following two years to implement the other two thirds of the containers?
That's up to legislature, Oklahoma Legislature. They, they set aside the funding for this. It is a very competitive process to go through to get the REAP grant. It is issued through, the REAP grants are awarded through OEDA, but we would, as long as the funding is there, we would be eligible to apply for that funding for this, for this or any other water, sewers, street project we chose to do that particular year.
So there's no real guarantee that even if we apply, we would get it?
There's, at this point, there's not a guarantee that if we apply, we get it, no. We have been very fortunate. We have only been turned down for a REAP grant over the past 15 years once. Last year, we didn't get full funding, but we got the majority of our funding that we applied for. Thank you.
Joe Don, what would be the process of selection of who gets the first units?
Well, that would be, what we would look at is the areas that are probably in the greatest need. Probably what I, that certainly, once we get into and we see that we are getting to award that, get awarded that grant, we would start going through the process and meeting with the sanitation committee to see how to best implement that process. But right now, there's nothing in place saying that we're going to start on the east side of town, that we're going to start with these, this area. There's nothing like that setting, set out at this point.
Does counsel have any further questions for Mr. Dunham? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-112, authorizing application for the financial assistance from the REAP funds in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of purchasing Polycarts.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Miller, a second from Dr. Hannaford, to approve Resolution 2015-112, authorizing application for financial assistance from the REAP funds in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of purchasing Polycarts. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckert.
Yes.
Item number nine is discussion and action to approve the purchase of a 2006 Lee Boy 8515 asphalt paver, serial number 45843, from Woods County, in the amount of $85,000.
Recently, the county approached the city of Alva about them going, they, they were wanting to get rid of their asphalt paver because they were no longer using it and had not used it as much as they, I guess they had originally intended. This paver only has 885 or 86 hours on it. It's eight foot, it has a width of eight to 15 foot and a 74 horsepower diesel engine. This purchase would allow street crews to eliminate the, our current usage of slurry sealing of streets and reduce the amount of chip and seal repairs that the city is currently doing. To kind of give you a little bit of history, the slurry seal is an effective yet very dated form of repair, and if we look at the life expectancy of a repair, repair job for, with slur, using the slurry seal method, it's about three to five years. A chip and seal repair job has the life expectancy of about three to seven years. With the use of this equipment and a hot asphalt overlay procedure, has the capability to last 10 to 12 years. If we compare this with a complete reconstruction of the street and rebuild with concrete, which would last 20 to 25 years. Current prices that we have been able to find for a comparable used piece of equipment would be anywhere from $69,000 to $185,000, depending on the age and the hours of that piece of equipment. We feel that the price that we've been quoted by Woods County is comparable to the median price, and it is available and it is in good shape. price and it is available and it is in good shape. If we look at the costs of that, according to the Best Practices Handbook on Asphalt Pavement Maintenance, which was performed by the Minnesota Department of Transportation, per unit cost for both slurry seal and chipping, chip seal is about a dollar fifty per square yard, depending on the size of the project and the material used, while the cost of a hot oil asphalt ranges between eighteen dollars and thirty dollars per ton of mix. This would be a more expensive repair job than what we are currently doing. It would, but it would be a longer lasting repair job than what we are currently, what we are currently doing. And I believe it would, based on the complaints that I have received because of the chip and seal and the slurry seal, I believe it would be a, a finished product more of what the citizens of Alva are expecting to see. At this, at this time, I'd like to, if you have any questions, I mean, I'd recommend that the board approve this purchase. It is eighty-five thousand dollars. The way we would, the way we would come up with the funds for this is currently we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project at Public Works for building enhancement and addition that would, we would reduce eighty-five thousand dollars to make this purchase. So it not come out of any, it would come out of this year's budgeted funds. It would not come out of reserve or anything to that effect. It could delay the, and would delay the start of the, the bidding of the extension, the building extension at Public Works, but it would not completely eliminate that project out of this year's budget. The project could be started later if it deemed appropriate, could be started later on this year and continued, continued on to next year and finished up with next year's budget. But at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this purchase, this proposed purchase.
Joe Don, where would we intend to get our ad for hot asphalt mix from?
The, it's, we're, the closest, it'd be the same company that we are current, well, right now, it'd be the same company we are currently using for our hot oil that we're purchasing and that is over in Enid, I believe. It, it, it would have to, it would come from either Enid or it would come from Woodward. There's, those are the two closest hot, hot mix plants in the area that I'm aware of.
So would it have to come, would it have to buy from there, transport it to our side as there's a certain amount of time that you have to get it from Enid to here?
It has to, it has to be maintained at a certain temperature, yes. During the summer months, when this would be utilized and when this would be, when we'd be putting this down, there's not an issue with maintaining the temperature from either one of those locations. But during the winter months, it would, we would not be able to utilize it. We couldn't keep it warm enough. It wouldn't be something we would stockpile. We couldn't keep it hot. We, it would be something that we would have delivered and use immediately upon delivery.
Because in a discussion I had with the county commissioner today, they, they saw that as one of the big drawbacks for why they did not want to do asphalt anymore, was even building, getting the product, getting it on site in times where it was usable to make, to make the repair.
At this point, we feel that, that, I mean, but we, we have been informed that it would not be an issue to get that from either one of those locations to the City of Alva to be utilized, you know, during those summer months, during the cooler months, during the fall and during the, and the spring, there would be an issue with that. It would be used mainly during the summer months. The rest of the time, it would, you know, we would put off our chip and seal till, we'd either do those earlier when it was cooler or we would do those later when it was cooler. But during the summer months, we would focus on the, on the asphalt overlay and wouldn't need to do that. And from the information we have been given at this time, that should not be an issue during the summer months to keep it at that temperature, usable temperature to get it here in the City of Alva to be used.
Yeah, one final question, Joe Don. Why would we not get through the standard bid process on an eighty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment?
Well, one, it is available. We did quote it out. We did search and make sure that we were at comparable prices. We did quote, we did quote that with our, with the dealers that we would normally go to for this piece of equipment. It is cheaper than what's on the state contract right now and it is, and it is cheaper than what the vendors we would normally use for this purchase, for a purchase like this than what they would have told us they would quote it for us at. The standard bid process would be go, if we were going to buy it new, would be going through the state bid. And like I said, this is a cheaper price than what the state bid would have allowed.
Does the city have the necessary number of personnel that are trained and able to run it?
To my knowledge, yes. They, it would take no more, no more personnel than what it currently takes for our chip seal.
Which has?
I think it takes five to operate our chip seal machine.
My fear in this would be that we have a Kirby machine that I believe was broke down and inoperable.
No. We used that Kirby machine just last year over on, off of Hunt Street and right around there to pour those curbs and gutters. We've used that.
So it's not broken down at this point?
No. We, we've used it, we used it recently over on, around Hunt and Maple and those, those neighborhoods where we reconstructed the streets.
Were you by Empire?
Yeah.
I thought those were formed and poured.
There was some forming and pouring done, but the, the Kirby machine was used for the majority of them. We used it up on High Street also. But yeah, to my knowledge, that machine is not broke down.
Are there any questions for Mr. Dunham? If not, I would entertain a motion.
When I, at the, when I had, we didn't meet on this particular purchase. We did, I did send out an email to everybody on the street and alley committee and they, at the time, they had all responded back in the affirmative to move forward with it. Anybody that had ultimately responded, responded back in the affirmative.
That many in the street department feel that it'd be beneficial?
Yes, he does, yes. He feels it would be beneficial. Anyway, for the reasons I've stated.
And this would give us some more quality product than our committee would be more proud of?
I believe so, yes.
From the feedback I've received, I think, you know, people that have had the chip and seal repaired, I mean, know they're glad they've had the repairs. They have almost, almost to a person asked why we didn't, you know, repay, you know, with something like this and.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2006 Leeboy eighty-five one five asphalt in Woods County in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford, second by Councilman Stelling to approve the purchase of a 2006 Leeboy eighty-five fifteen asphalt paver, serial number four five eight four three from Woods County in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion?
Well, Joe Don, why did we originally buy this equipment? That's when we were spending buying money for chip and seal.
Because we, we, no, it was, it was determined at the time that the chip and seal, our chip and seal machine was dated and was not working correctly and we needed the chip and seal machine and a, the, the need for the chip and seal was higher than the need for this machine at the time.
Will still use the chip and seal?
We still, we will still use the chip and seal machine. It will still be a utilized machine. This will not eliminate the usage of chip and seal repairs and, through the city. There will still be chip and seal machine, chip and seal work done.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
No.
Melton?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item number ten is discussion in action to accept beneficial interest in the trust, trust indenture creating the Alva Arena Authority.
Well, I believe there are representatives from the Alva Arena Authority group that are here. This is the, asking us to take a beneficiary interest in the creation of that trust. I would let them make any comments that they deem fit to make at this time. It is a Title 60 trust to complete the development and construction of an expo center in the City of Alva and ultimately operate that, that expo center. And this is, they are asking at this time for us to take a beneficiary interest in that, in that trust.
Joe Don, you know, we don't need to make a recommendation, I don't think, at this time, to answer the questions. If there are, I think you all have received the trust document, it's very self-explanatory. We're just offering it to see if the city's interested at this time. If there's questions we might be able to answer, somebody can just ask if the city's interested in it.
It's my understanding the county commissioners met with this topic as well today.
They approve this one.
They approve.
Mr. Olmwood, this would allow basically your group to start the formation of your boards and those types of things to initiate the, the start of this, once this is approved?
I'd make a motion to accept beneficial interest in the trust indenture creating the Alva Arena Authority.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Dr. Haniford, to accept beneficial interest in the trust indenture creating the Alva Arena Authority. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hannafer?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item number eleven is discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B2 to discuss negotiations with IAFF Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Excuse me?
Okay.
I didn't hear the motion, I'm sorry.
I still move that we enter into executive session to discuss IAFF Local 3782.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Fisher, a second by Councilman Miller, to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307B2 to discuss negotiations with IAFF Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melon?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hannafer?
Yes.
Stelling?
Okay, I'd like to ask the clerk, council members, business manager and city attorney to remain and we'll holler at you guys when we return to regular session. Regular session. Item number thirteen is discussion in action on negotiation with IAFF Local 3782 Alva, Oklahoma as discussed in executive session and there is no action to be taken. Item number fourteen, remarks and inquiries by citizens. A public comment will be limited, two minutes per speaker. Speaker must identify himself or herself. Are there any remarks from citizens?
Hi, I'm Mrs. Jackie Moore. I've got three things I'd like to say, so I would appreciate this, first, I got word that there's consideration for training extreme and to a place where it's a little weird. I think that's a terrible decision. We've got that as far as to be at the, don't take that with my kids, first, but it's kids. Second, I heard that you guys are considering moving the school to the country and taking up their school buildings to utilize, apply some sort of, my kids ride the bikes to school. That's kind of making memories and several other kids do that. I mean, that's a terrible decision to come up with another plan, moving schools out of law. It'd be much appreciated. Third, the street on, or Church Street, that's in Hornet for a year. And I heard also that the REIT's not being finished, you know, because they're better, that you guys need the hot weather to create them for the asphalt. It's not going to be hot, it didn't seem to care. It was so much worse than when they got Florida and it would really be great to see that finished come next summer since weather seems to be the issue. And come summertime, if the budget isn't there, then it might seem like it was smart to begin with if we got the money to finish what started.
Thank you. I'm not aware of any committees or bodies of this group talking about closing the extreme. And I think it's safe to say that's a rumor.
That's up to that organization, they own the building, I assume, or rent the building. The City of Alva doesn't have anything to do with that.
School trade was, is probably an item that needs to, you probably should address the school board, I would say. They brought that to us. It wasn't an action that, that the city, and in fact, this body has not even looked at that yet. So it, that was a school board initiated and it was included on an agenda item for discussion, but there's not been any action taken on that for the rec park board, not for city council. And streets are important.
I mean, Church Street is a street, we did get it, we did mill it up. Mill the top layer off of it. We did find places in it that needed, that were failing and needed additional repair that should, would we have come back immediately with a chip seal, which was what would have been planned for that street at the time? That, that area would have failed anyway and it would have been the same mess that it is in now, as far as the holes. We are still slated to repair those, repair that area with concrete at this time. We are still slated to repair those, repair that area with concrete at this time, and we are still slated to come back and finish it, and since they, since the asphalt paver has been approved, that will more than likely be the method of repair for that street at this time, come summertime. There will be work done on it between now and then, as far as fixing the areas that have failed, and sealing up the areas that are cracked. But then we, I believe that's the street that we would have, we will change to an asphalt overlay instead of a chip seal at the current time. I mean, we are still planning, I mean, that is a project that is slated to be completed this budget year, and we fully, I fully intend to try to get it completed this budget year.
Okay, so what, do you have a deadline set for that street, so we can look more to if you can do that?
Well, at this time, it will not be, if we go back with, assuming we're going back with the overlay, and that is still a viable option for that street, it will not be completed until the weather warms up for us to get the material from either Enid or Woodward here. Right now, we cannot get it, that material is delivered hot, and it cannot maintain, we cannot maintain the temperature from those locations to Alva to get it done. So it will be a springtime, early summertime project to complete.
So it's been related and probably by the end of next summer?
It would be, I would say it'd be completed by the end of June. I mean, that's, that's the timeline is this budget year, our, we would go from July 1 to June 30. So that is a project slated for this budget year.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or inquiries, remarks or inquiries from citizens?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Chapin. The poly carts, if that were to get approved, what would you guys do for people who are elderly or disabled who couldn't wheel the carts from their house to the curb?
That is one of the reasons we are looking at smaller poly carts. We may even look at some, they do have them smaller than the 65 gallon. In the communities that I have talked with, wheeling them out, they're very easily manipulated and moved, wheeling them out is, has not been, been an issue with the communities that I've talked with and that I've been associated with that have had these, these, this type of product. In other communities, they, you know, they've gone to, when they've implemented them, they've gone all, completely to street side pickup instead of alley pickup. I don't know that that's, I don't, that's not going, that wouldn't be my recommendation at this time, and it's not what is in the plans for this project, but, you know, we have not seen the issue of it being a problem for people to wheel out. Now, if it becomes an issue, we'll try to address it, but at this time, I don't know that that's an issue.
Are there any other questions? Item number 15 is remarks and inquiries by council members. Council members? All right, thank everyone for being here tonight, and we're going to, we're going to close this meeting, we're going to open the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miller?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 16, 2015, and approval of claims in the amount of $127,017.52, and payroll expenses of $23,728.05. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Eckhart, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.